So having it be early before there's traffic and when it's cool, because you don't want to do it at 100 degrees.
With that, with all of that stuff though, like a 5K, you really need to get advertising out more than just.
Corey has a contact, but.
I just thought I'd get ahold of Ann Pfeiffer and see if she would want to help. May not. We'll just see. Again, that's why we had this thing, temporary agenda.
Tentative.
Some of this stuff tentative, may not happen.
Correct.
So that's, if we put it out there, throw everything on the wall, if some of it sticks great, if not, try it.
There's always next year.
Next year, we'll put it in there. So. Alright, anything else here?
No, that's it.
Well, just one other thing. Years past, we've had a bunch of road barricades, just the old one ones, and they've dwindled into, I think we have three left. And like, we use them for water main breaks, and bean days, we use the most. And I know right now, we don't have enough. So I don't know if we can go buy four or five more just to add to what we have, because if, we've always closed the street down with those first and over the years, but now we won't have enough just because they've broken through the old wood ones, but.
So can you price some of them and then get back to me?
By the next meeting. I can have it by the next meeting.
Sure, perfect.
Don't take the long, get some plastic ones.
Okay. Alright, Brian.
Okay, quick update, um, just for the purpose of the minutes to, uh, that we are continuing the discussion on the water rate analysis. Yet again, um, the, the discussion now, because the rate increases would, are higher than we would like. Uh, I'm actually considering expanding and expanding the water rate analysis to include the sewage sewer rates as well. Uh, because if you take a holistic view of it, our expenses are really spread across sewage treatment as well as, you know, water intake. Uh, and we were only taking mostly expensive and applying it to the water intake, which I don't think is fair. So I, I'm going back, I'm gonna have another meeting with Jesse, uh, North Dakota Water and get his feedback. I've done some preliminary numbers. Vance and I met once to discuss this. Um, if, if it looks, the numbers, the way they came out, the sewage rates would actually go down fairly significantly and the water rates would go up. So it's basically just shifting the, the funds, you know, and how we use them. So uh, we need, we need to do some more work on there. Not done yet, but it's still in play. So I, it was one of the things that Jesse actually postponed from our original meeting and because he said it's too big a work and well, no, I think we need to include it. So.
He just, he just got back from vacation.
I'm sorry?
He just got back from vacation today, so.
Oh, did he?
You should talk to him.
I have reached back to him for a couple of weeks, so I'll get, get some more input on that. So, um, that's it.
Okay, before you, before we move on, I forgot something. So that bike path I was talking about, that goes along the railroad track, um, I need your help, Jim, fill out this application.
Check your email.
Huh?
Check your email.
You did it already? Oh, man, that's good. Okay, cool, thanks.
So we're good?
Just a couple of things we need to talk about, but.
Yeah.
The bulk of it's.
But it, yeah, it had some stuff that I didn't know. So, thanks.
Golden star for Jim.
Yeah, really.
You're giving a lead early.
Adam Boy.
You can buy the ice cream.
Yeah.
Adam Boy. Alright, Dave, what do you got?
Um, the assistant honor position, I reviewed all the resumes come up. My list, Vance has reviewed the resumes come up to his list and, uh, he sent me this, so we're just, uh, version ours together. We're gonna try to start interviews next week.
Good.
How many candidates you down to?
We're gonna be probably ten or eleven for first round interviews.
Awesome.
Yep.
A lot of good candidates. That was amazing. I'm glad that we got that type of, um, resume coming in on our position like that. That was great.
But we, we've, we've got our first list and we're just hoping that because it's been a bit of time, we'll think those people are still available, but we still have a lot of people, good people in the resume list, but that's our top to start.
That's great.
Yes.
Good?
Yep.
John?
The big thing I did is I took a little drive through town, driving through some of the developments. Quit laughing and no comments out of you, Adam. So I noticed a few things and I just think that we have to get more of a, uh, a plan in place and active. And a lot of it just seems like general cleanup. I've talked to Dave, I've talked to Adam, you know, we did a lot of work on this cleanup in town. We have, we've done nothing with it since. You and I met with Gary, I've emailed, called him, no response.
Yep.
We need to get back on that list and follow up. Uh, we can't expect Adam and Ben to proceed and do this stuff. If we're not back in a month, then I think we gotta get back on that list. It's already July. Uh, a lot of the mowing, where are we at? You know, we had discussions, just, I know letters went out to some of these developers on it. We have, the park area isn't mowed, so it just seems like it.
So we start finding them.
But is the park our responsibility?
No, the parks, the parks.
Parks, the parks.
The parks board, right?
And that, in Prairie that you were talking about? Yeah, that's, that's a conversation you guys need to have with the park board because.
Yeah, why, why do we have cattails growing in that ditch?
Adam and Acres, they haven't mowed around that park. They're concerned about that park and yet they haven't did anything.
Nope, I saw that one as well.
We've, I mean, we've kind of brought it up to the park and they're like, well, you guys can mow it, but it's park property, it's.
They have the resource, right, at Moles, because he comes and mows.
They got, they got Geno.
That's one they said that they never accepted, so they don't want to take care of it. They want nothing to do with it.
Riverview? Prairie?
Prairie, they want nothing to do with that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
I know, but it's dedicated to the park. It's a choice.
No, they didn't accept it.
It was theirs.
It was supposed to be a park. It wasn't supposed to be a ditch. And that's the, the, this has gone on, I don't even know how far back, all the way back to when they realized it wasn't a park. Because that was not.
Those end caps, there's, they can do something with those and they haven't done anything with those either. And that, there's a potential for a bike path down in the center of it.
Absolutely, there is. So I guess my side of it is if I were to go, if I were to go look at the.
That's a, that's a retention pond. You can't put it in. Yes, it's a retention pond.
Yeah, you can't do anything with it.
Which is, correct. That's, that's their point right there.
It's not for the whole, it's supposed to.
It's not supposed to be retention.
Water can go in and then it drains out. It's not supposed to stay there.
That's not a park.
It never was a park in the middle.
The original plan, there was one plan that showed.
No, the original plan had a, had a road, uh, a bike, had a sidewalk going down the middle of it.
That was it, in a little corner with some trees. That was all the original one was.
Well, they would rather have that than the drainage ditch. That's what they're mad because they seen the original one, they thought they were getting a path down the middle, not a drainage ditch that they have to take care of. No. That's why they're upset.
How that all changed.
Because basically they got nothing. They, a drainage ditch is not.
Get some cattails.
It's not parkland and not a bike path. So they got nothing. And that's why they're mad.
Okay, regardless of, it looks like crap. And it's, and two things. One, why are we holding water and if our cattails grow, it's obviously not performing the way it should. And two is, who's gonna take care of mowing it? So that's that one.
So then you go back to the developer agreement, which probably didn't exist back then.
Pretty sure it does.
There was something.
I think it is.
We talked about this one.
I think it's in there. I would have to look at our file.
So you're thinking Dabbert could be responsible?
It's deeded to the park.
It's a, it's a drainage ditch. It's not parkland.
I was gonna say if it's been, if I go out on the taxes and it says it's owned by the park board, isn't their responsibility?
It says it's park.
Says it's park. I've booked and I've written them on it.
But that's not what they were told they were getting. So it's, they're, so they don't accept.
So that would be telling Dabbert that this is not what we got.
So they are not accepting it as a, as a drainage ditch.
Tell Dabbert that it's not working.
Or the city park district.
Because again, and they don't, they don't.
Has that conversation with them?
They don't sign off on the development after it's done. They just get handed, here's your, here's what you're stuck with.
But you see what I'm saying though, that we need to know so we can talk to Dabbert and say, this is, it's not working as it's supposed to. When we had these discussions, this was supposed to be for.
But when that development signed off as complete, it's not complete if it's a drainage ditch.
Lucas, what, what, what do you mean, it's not working like it's supposed to?
I was also under the impression that it was, that was their area, that it was the park district's area to do with something more than just have it be retention.
There should be a drain plan for that area.
Yeah, there is, sure.
Okay, is that, is that?
It's built through the plans.
Yeah, it's built.
Yeah.
But that, but that is, that is part of the drain plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's where all the water runs.
But, but the point.
Yes. So if it doesn't perform right, whose responsibility is it?
What we found with that one in the beginning, and I don't, I haven't looked at it lately, is that the water in the wall avenue ditch was getting so high, it was backing up into that pond. That's what was happening at one time. That ditch has been cleaned out since then, but I haven't looked at it, John, since to see. But that was what happened originally. There was cattails and stuff.
One problem is the wall, you know, over time, it's gonna fill in with dirt. It always does. It's always a problem with those water retention ponds. It's gonna be a maintenance big forever.
And when we talk about what they agreed to, what they agreed to is certainly not a drainage ditch. That was not what they agreed with the developer to get. So it might have changed to become a drainage ditch, but that was not ever what the park board agreed to in the beginning when those discussions started. And so this is kind of where you have a checklist and we get the developers' agreements, but the whole thing falls apart because it changes and nobody ever goes back to this party and then now everybody goes, well, but it's the park districts. No.
Does the park board have what they agreed to or what they thought they agreed to?
Well.
I'm, I'm just curious, because we got in on the tail on that one, with the design and the bend on and everything, so we just got.
So my question, which I've questioned, I've asked Shannon as well, is have you talked to Dabbert to let him know? And I don't think that they have.
Because he never comes to their meetings. You know how many times?
I'm saying, you send him an email or a call.
Send him, call him, send him an email. That's, that's what you need to.
But it hasn't been accepted by the park board. That'd be.
It's deeded to their, it's deeded to them. It's in their name.
They don't get to accept. They don't get an acceptance part in it.
Again, they're another governing entity, so what responsibility is there is to make sure that this is done properly. Why does it fall on the city when it's there? I mean, I agree we should help, we should definitely help and make sure.
Well, when you come to the end of the project and it's signed off, it's signed off by the city. It's not signed up by the park district.
This argument's been out there for how long?
So maybe the developers.
Exactly.
The city, the city accepts it based on, was it built to the plan investigations? And if the plans that were provided to the contractor were to build a, a pond there and they did that, that's all we can accept. That's, that's all I can say from that perspective. I mean, if there was other iterations.
But somewhere it got, somewhere it got changed to that and everyone back to that.
Right. John, maybe you should speak to Dabbert.
Okay.
As a suggestion.
You know, one, one reason the park board's kind of mad too, is all the taxes they have to pay on that land that they don't really get to use, look at their specials and taxes. Their two thousand sixteen taxes due on that is eleven thousand dollars for something they don't really get to use. So.
So.
But I mean, I'm not trying to stick up for anyone here, but it does have two end caps that could have something done. Nothing's been done to them. So I, I guess I don't know, Dave.
I think at least have the initial conversation. I believe Park Board should be involved in this with them. They should have a conversation if it's John and somebody from Park Board and Dawn and just sit down and talk this out. Otherwise, you're just gonna sit here and waste it more and more and more time. Because it's already been a year, right, since this thing kind of got signed off at Park River, right, when we wandered around? And we're still jabbering about it instead.
Let's get it done.
So how do we put something in to go forward that they sign off on? Because you know, when, at the end, the city signs, the city signs off. The engineer signs off for the city that it's built to spec, but the park part is not part of that and that, so again, we kind of go back in the circle.
It's the, they meet with the park board and park.
Check.
Park dedication agreement.
But that doesn't mean that it was built to spec. It doesn't mean they got what they thought they were getting. How does that get included? Because, you know, you've got a park coming up in Moles River and not that I don't expect it to be built to spec, but what if it's not? The same thing with Edelman's, we had to go through the same revaluation with.
Then I think the park district should be entering into agreements with the developer.
That's what I thought we talked about, was they'd have a separate agreement with the developer. That was the.
They tell me whether or not they talked to them and got it approved. So I think we have better.
So they, so they need a written agreement.
Or what's the guarantee the park board has that they get what they want?
If they do their agreement, sign their agreement.
Yeah.
Okay, again, if we would, if we would have pushed Adam in, would he have ever finished the park up there?
You're correct, but why can't we make a change going forward that, at this point, why, you know, again, it all's falling to the city, but they're a governing body that can tax and do all that type of stuff and we're doing all the work. You know, I mean, if it's coming down to this, why are we doing all the work?
What's their responsibility?
I don't argue with Sharon at all. Park Board knew exactly what they were getting. I sat there in a meeting with Park Board there. They saw the, they saw, they screwed up. I'm sorry. I was there for it. They, they knew exactly, the plan.
They knew they were getting a drainage ditch? No.
That's part of the drain.
They didn't, they didn't, not in the beginning.
Okay. I, I'm not gonna argue this, but they were there. And again, they didn't ask the questions.
Again, I'm not sure what the recourse is here, but this is, this to me is a park board issue that needs to be, that conversation needs to be done with them.
But I think they need some sort of, they need some sort of written agreement and then there has to be a contingency from the city side that if the park board doesn't sign off, if the city doesn't sign off.
I agree with that. I mean, something has to be, but it does, like Corey pointed out, it says it in there. But my, my concern still is you have the agreement made and they still don't do it. The developer still doesn't do it. Because Adam had the agreement with the park board. Didn't do it. They took us pushing and pushing and finally.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it took us pushing.
Again, we still, ultimately, you're gonna always have some oversight on it. Correct, or am I?
Yeah, I mean, then you can just withhold building permits or something.
I mean, that's what we do.
Have it done.
To me, this is what we had talked about, that the park board has their own separate.
Whatever subdivision that it is and then it's included in there that says.
And we can have that into our checklist too, that until the park board signs off on this.
It is, it's, it's in there.
Well, it's like you said, it says park, yeah.
I was at a meeting, I was, I was with Dabbert and the park district.
Yeah, so.
And it was done, right?
When I, when I was there, I, I assumed so, yeah.
Okay. My other question is River's Edge, mowing around the building. Who owns the building and the lot there?
Dabbert.
Okay, why is that, is that agreement not done yet?
Nope.
Okay, can I recommend that our attorney and their attorney lock themselves in a room tomorrow and get this agreement done? What is, this is dragged out another year.
Yeah.
So we tried to mow it and it's never been final graded, so we blew a belt on the little mower and it's so rough that you.
Got it stuck once.
Can't mow it, got it stuck once. We probably, the three of us probably spent three hours out there and got it kind of knocked down. But it's never been final graded, it's never been seeded, it's never been nothing. We had conversations with Don, he's like, it's the city's responsibility. I'm leasing that to you guys. But it's his property that whole way and it's, it's a disaster to be honest, because they're, we can't really do anything with it unless it's.
It's, the city doesn't have to mow it. It is still his lot and it's still his system.
Absolutely. There's no more building permits. Let's get this done. I mean, I don't get, how hard is it to get a development?
Why don't we just start fining people if they don't mow?
What's that?
Just fine them. I mean, you can give them no building permits, but the city Fargo sends letters out, if you don't do this by a certain day, you're gonna get a fine or whatever, so much. Why don't we do the same thing?
We did.
We do. We just did it around a bit to five or six developers.
I think we can only fine it like, once a year or twice?
Is it once or twice that we can mow and then send them a fine?
I haven't seen.
I think it's like one time.
I think it's only once.
The Sharon revision.
Under what?
When we first started this thing.
Under.
You're right, because nobody wants them. We don't want them all. We really don't want enough to do that.
What I'm gonna say is, uh, Lucas instructed me and Corey that I would bill, I would send an invoice to Mr. Dabbert for maintenance. And I did. And he threw it right back in my face and considered that an insult. So you think he's gonna pay a fine? I don't think so.
And the whole deal was if he owned it, he would do all the maintenance.
He does own it.
He owns it.
But exactly, if he kept ownership of it, he would do all the maintenance. And if we tend to provide for maintenance, he wouldn't pay that.
But I, I would think, going to say to Shannon, I don't think. He don't pay any attention to it.
Maybe Mr. Dabbert doesn't want to do business in the city anymore.
Uh, bingo.
So my question so goes back to, what have we got to do to get this agreement done?
We have the agreement. It's, right now, Dabbert owns that system, so it's his responsibility to take care of it. And then we'll make our revisions to the agreement and send it back. So it's a lease agreement and we didn't like the terms because it.
It's not right.
Wasn't good for the city.
So you revise it, it's set back to him and it's.
They sit on it.
And they sit on it.
Mm-hmm.
It's like a time frame thing to get it done. I mean, seriously.
But right now, he owns it, so it's his responsibility. So the city isn't on the hook.
But we're the ones operating it.
Until, until it's signed off.
Can we go the other way and take eminent domain if he doesn't get something done in a period of time and take ownership of it? Because it is a.
It's, it's already his. The agreement that we're just doing is just saying that the city's going to lease his. And the way it's written now, it's a city, through this lease agreement, has to maintain and do all this and that. And we weren't okay with that because it's, as, it's his lot, he should have to mow it. And the city shouldn't have to take care of it.
Because that becomes our expense.
Yes.
Along with everything else.
So right now, the city shouldn't be the one that is responsible for mowing it.
No, I agree, but if they won't agree to a contract, to an agreement that is amenable to us as a city, to both. There's, the reason he wants to own is there's value in that land and there's value in that equipment.
Yeah.
So why can't we take it by eminent domain if he doesn't get his access?
How are we running it without an agreement? It says we can operate it.
Because the state, it's, it's a health issue, essentially, right?
Exactly. Why, why is it any different than a lift station that's put in? When a lift station's put in, we take over it, so why didn't we take this over? Because he knows there's value in it and there's gonna be a sewer system where he can pull this out, sell two lots, make money.
Well, yeah, the original agreement was the city would own it. Then it switched, they wanted a lease agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So it's changed. So we're handling it, we're handling.
Did we ever agree on the lease, not the city just owning it? Did we say, yes, we're gonna do that?
We said we'd negotiate, but he can't drag his feet so long.
Withhold building permits.
Yeah, but how does it tie into the drain field issue? Was that all settled and done?
No, it's not his.
No, that's separate.
That lot?
You mean that, but, yeah.
Where the lift station was put in, where he owns that lot?
Yeah. No, that's a whole separate.
Yeah, that's different.
Well, it is separate, but it's just a weapon.
Yes.
Bottom line is, I see.
We'll, we'll get the agreement.
Looks very unattractive.
We'll get the agreement.
What's, what agreement are you gonna, are you?
And then you guys will approve it. So you'll see it. It'll be a lease agreement, but it's gonna be terms that are more favorable to the city than what it currently says.
Can I ask something about mowing?
Yes.
Uh, Adam and Ben, what about, um, the, the ditches that are the counties? And they're not getting diligent, especially out on seventy-six, about mowing those ditches. Do you guys ever go and ditch that or do you have an avenue that pushes?
We mow it here and there. The county will mow maybe one time a year, maybe two times. That's all they'll do.
So like, when I get time alone.
So if we get spare time, we hop in and mow a few paths here and there where we can, but they'll, sometimes twice a year and then sometimes it's only one pass maybe.
It's just so hard to get after people to clean up their own yards when so much of our park and empty lots are. And I'm not trying to say you gotta mow it every week. You know, driving through some of the, and once the lot's sold, it gets up to the builder or homeowner to take responsibility of it. So we're dealing with how many different people. And some of them have them at different lengths, but yeah, the. It's just hard to present a city well when we don't have to, we don't have to clean up.
Well, I know I'll get in touch with the park board and ask them to mow Edelman's and the two end caps over at Prairie. Even if it, the middle, it's a whole different.
We can't mow middle, the other, it's too wet.
But if they do the ends.
So it's still too wet?
It's always wet. I mean, there's cattails in it, it's not gonna dry out anytime soon.
In other words, it's not functioning the way it's supposed to?
There is high groundwater in that area too, so there may be some of that contributing to it.
And we didn't know that going into it?
I don't know. That was, like I said, before we got on board.
I got one more for River's Edge too. I believe Kent, it sounds like Kent got in touch with them. You guys all saw the pictures, the high, uh, water in the ditches from the river backing up into it?
For three weeks?
Yeah, it was more than two weeks. It was a little over a month. We still haven't got any response back on that. That is gonna be a huge issue when you start to stick million dollar houses in there and they got waters in it in their ditches for a month.
Uh, I can comment on that. Uh, I had a conversation with, Houston designed that and, uh, and the thing is, is there was every, every lot was supposed to have Houston come out there, shoot the grade on it. And where most of the water is in the first three houses is in some of it. And they never even bothered to call to get the grade set. And so they just dumped the culvert in, mowed. But there is a process that between Don and Houston to get every culvert, there's supposed to be, the grade's supposed to be shot and that's what's put in. And that's not the case. And then, then the landscapers come and pull a bunch of dirt in the ditch and that don't help much either.
But that's not the concern as much as the water from the river.
Also a concern too.
As much as that other one from coming back from the river. Every, every spring it's gonna back up.
Yeah, I know what you guys are talking about too. Backed all the way up to the Brent slot over there in the corner.
Yeah, any, anytime we've got a decent amount of snow, there's gonna be water standing in that development for a month.
And they'll call instantly.
I mean, is that the same storm drain issue that there should be a flap on the end to prevent backfall?
There should have been a lift station, there should have been a lift station in the river.
There should have been a lift.
So if it was a high river and they had that much water, there's a way to get it out. Now there's not. So even if there is a flap and it is a spring and the river's high for three months or whatever, that water's going nowhere because it's got no way to get out. And we told them this the minute it got put in, before it was finalized, this is not gonna work and they would not respond to us. They went nothing.
So here again, we can't accept this lot because this whole thing.
Well, this is every, every river lot in the city.
It's a same repeat issue.
And this is the same repeat issue that we had in Chestnut. That's why there's that tiny little lift station there, because it was just to appease.
Uh, while staying on River's Edge, did you see the boulders at the end of the driveway? That, uh, house was put in?
That'll find it this winter.
That's.
No, I, I, I didn't notice those. I'll take a look.
We like the same one by the dentist office and we'll find it.
No. Is that a problem?
If they're right on the edge of the road, it is. Because you're glaustic, you're, I'll look at it tomorrow. I haven't seen the boulders yet. Which lot is it?
Uh, it's, you gotta go back around.
It's on the million dollar halt, Long Concrete Dragway.
Yep.
If they're ways off the road, it don't matter to me. But if they're right up.
It, it is fairly close like Johnson, but I never went up and measured it, but.
In reality, everything should be at least eight feet off the curves, minimum. Because if we ever have to blow, go back in there with a snow blower, they're covered.
Once you have one person doing it, then you're gonna touch it anymore, so.
Because, Lucas, do we have any ordinances against having any landscaping stuff like that in the boulevard?
Uh, there's an ordinance for it. I haven't looked at it. I'm sure there's something that says if it's obstructing, then you can't have it, but I'd have to look. There's a landscaping.
You want to shoot me an email?
And anything new with the tires in the backyard?
Still tires.
There's still tires. Um, I can tell you that they do not have a four oh four permit from the Corps of Engineers to do it. But that being said, after a very long conversation with a lady from the Corps. Years ago, in their infinite wisdom, the government decided that they were going to implement a nationwide Corps permit for work along rivers, streams, wetlands, blah, blah, blah. They did not even have to, um, inform the Corps that they were doing this work as long as they followed this guy, these guidelines. So if he did follow those guidelines and was under their permit, I don't know where we're gonna be at as far as getting him cleaned up.
By putting tires on a bank? The Corps would allow that?
It was, it was in that permit. It was allowed.
It's called shit. When you put cars on the bank, you've never seen other areas that did the same thing.
I got a call for, I called Adam. I got a call from a realtor who was looking at one of the river lots. You know, in their backyard, we look across the river.
At the landscaping.
At the landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
So.
It's, and everybody I talked to, Southeast Cass, the Corps, um, pretty much everybody, they're like, well, it's been in so long, it's like, we're not gonna touch it. It's like, sorry, it's under your guys' nuisance policy if you want something done about it. And I haven't had a conversation with them to see if, if he knew, no, it's just that one home, right, I believe. Haven't had a conversation with him to see if he knew about that permit, because if he does, if he does know about that permit, I don't know what the legal recourse is, if we can do the nuisance. Being it was technically under a permit. If it was done properly with, within the guidelines of that permit, but.
Well, I know that's not the first time you guys have dealt with dumping on the banks of the river somewhere.
And every time Southeast Cass Water District, every spring when they clean, when Mike Sabre was doing it and I was at the meetings, he reported every time there was anything that was dumped on the side of the river to Southeast Cass. Because I went to a lot of them Southeast Cass meetings when Mike was there and Senator Tom Fisher and that. And so I bet if you went in a minute, you can find documentation over and over again on all the stuff that's dumped in the river. What good that means, I don't know. Documentation over and over again on all the stuff that's dumped in the river. What good that means, I don't know, but there is documentation.
Yeah, if we wanna go anywhere on, it's gonna be nuisance policy. Anything else, Joe?
Sorry, I made a take there, I'm on. But.
Sure you did.
As hard, as hard as an action item, do we want Ben and Adam to revisit the list of stuff and bring it back to us in two weeks? And let's move forward again?
I mean, I'm okay with that, I know it's kinda slid because we've had all this other stuff going on, but.
It'd be good to see where we are.
What do you want done though? I mean, you need to tell us what half those ones we did last time, you guys didn't, the smaller ones you didn't do with. At what scale do you want us to do them? Or you want us to spend a week of time on it?
Suggestion that, you know, I can go back and look at all the ones that we wanted action done, what hasn't been done. Go back, take pictures, document what hasn't been done, because a lot of them haven't done anything, the ones that said they would. And then present that, but for you guys, whether it's one or two, or. Go out separately, drive around and just make a list of addresses of what you guys see that's wrong, to give us more of a baseline of where to go. You know, because I can drive around and I could do it on the computer right now and pull up thirty or forty more.
Well, I think you guys had a good list.
Yeah.
I think you go back to.
It'd be, it'd be nice to have a different perspective though, you know, call them out.
We need to try and get over here.
I don't think I wanna add anymore, I wanna just start with what we had and, like you said. See what's been done and what hasn't been done. If they said they were gonna do something and they didn't, then let's just document that.
And some of them, you know, we didn't even put on there, because it's like, okay, we don't really know where you want it to be, you know? For the people that always park in their ditch, or, you know, some of that stuff.
Just go back with the original, those who you took action on and what they, they did it or they didn't do it. Kind of start, go back to it, just keep it simple.
All right, anything else?
I'm done.
You're good?
Everybody agreed.
All right, so I've got on my list here, well Vance and I talked about, uh, appointing Shane onto the assessment committee commission. Lucas, when do we need to seek that? I suppose last month, as far as this goes, so we need, we need to get on with this, right?
So all it is, is you as the mayor appoint somebody and then the council confirms your appointment.
So how many people are on the assessment commission?
Three, and you have two.
And so we lost one.
We're the two.
Marsha and, uh.
Karen Brink.
Karen Brink.
Karen Brink, the two.
And Shane had mentioned that he would like, he, he could do be on it, and Vance and I talked about that.
I talked to Shane today and he's still.
He's still okay with that?
He's okay.
Okay. And you're okay with that?
Yeah, he's got the experience.
What do you guys say?
I know. I'm not a chairman.
All right.
I think that, uh, gonna be very blunt, that the experience that we've been dealing with over the last year is accredited to part of the last, uh. Councils that we've had and not forward thinking and not looking at things completely. And, uh, I think these are gonna be some very complicated and, uh, gotta come up with different ideas of just versus. Across the board, split it ten ways or twenty ways, with the, uh, person with the front footage, with all those types of things, I mean. I, I just think it would be wise of us to pick a different individual, see if there's others out there.
Okay. Anybody else got an opinion on that, or what's, say? No, Shane said he would do it, I mean, if you guys have a feeling one or another, I will come try and find someone else. It's just we do need to move with this then.
I would like to see another option.
Is there a reason why he was asking to be on the assessment district? He volunteered. I mean, you're practicing volunteering, but is that specific, do they have to say, this is why I want to be on the assessment district, or is it just, okay, I'll go do it?
Well, it came up.
Typically, in the past, it's. I mean, that, that's, I don't know how, you know, how the selection process goes about, right? Mr. Shockey told me to go ahead and try to find people, which I did, and that became extremely difficult because no one wants to get involved, right? It's not a popular position. Right, so we either run the risk of, of getting, not, and not happening, but that's the other side of this, right?
Why, each of us should be tasked on trying to find two people, go try to disallow.
If I could make the recommendation, we had a great group on the second go around, on the home of the chart. What about asking some of them who serve?
Yeah, I don't. I don't have the list, so I don't know who that is.
If you're willing to go find at least one or two, and I want to support this one, we'll find two, potential.
I think I have mixed emotions about it.
Okay.
You know, in some ways I can see the experience being helpful and in other ways. I see. Exactly what Dave sees, that it, 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 it doesn't, I don't know that having that will help us. It might put us too much in the box, so I'm open to looking at other suggestions before we decide.
Okay.
How do you do? I think we should have some candidates.
So how about?
I have a question.
Russell, go.
So, when we have a commission, is this how everybody does it? They have a commission of three appointed people who make decisions on who's gonna pay what?
They, they make the list and then it gets, uh, sent to the city auditor and the city council has to agree to that list. But yes, it's the Coast Century Code.
Okay, the commission works closely with attorneys and engineers, so.
Okay.
They have some guidance.
And it's any officer of the city can give them information.
But the bond documents recall, they, the documents say you have to have a, an unrelated party, if that's the right word, is that correct, Lucas? Some of that doesn't live there or benefit from these decisions. You don't have to live that out, but, uh, yeah.
So how is that possible?
Yeah, it's, it's, well, because we should be booking a new.
This commission is the same one that does it for all of your improvement projects, it's, it's not just a commission for one improvement project.
That's what I mean. So you talk about something like the SSL and that involves every person in the city.
Yeah.
So how do you find someone who doesn't live there? I mean, that's not possible.
Mr. Shockey told me you have to have someone from Horace, North Dakota, and you can check on that tomorrow. That's what he told me.
Have to be from Horace, yeah.
We had the lady from Kindred and he said he didn't want her.
Oh, he's saying for your vacancy, you have to have someone that's not from?
He said it doesn't need from. He just said unrelated.
So that's what I mean, it's confusing, confusing.
Yeah. You said unrelated to the situation of.
John Shockey told me that we had a lady from Kindred, that two residents, he said, I don't want the lady from Kindred, I want you to get a Horace resident.
Yeah, I think the Century Code got revised where it's not required, but I think it was where it said you had to have somebody that wasn't part of the city and then two people from it.
Well, check that out, I have no idea.
Well, I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah, because that would even change, even when you look at a road repair project, what if they lived in the development where the road repair is going to, I mean, how?
So.
I don't understand how that works.
Okay, um, we were talking, this is gonna be a multiple deal, this isn't just gonna be one special assessment we're talking about.
Hopefully, the agreement will be in place for all the projects going forward.
Right, okay.
Is there a term to it or anything like that, or is this just a?
They, they serve for a six-year term.
What?
They serve for a six-year term.
Six, okay.
So are any of the other people terminated? How long have the other two served?
They started in two thousand and ten. So they're all, we did the draining project.
So you need three new ones.
So then we need three new ones.
Seven years.
So we need three people.
Okay, so let's do this, guys, we'll, we'll, we need to spend a lot more time on this, but I think what we should do based upon what I've got feedback from you guys, let's table this for two weeks. And let's have another discussion about the assessment commission. If we can get through, is it a minimum of three?
Yep.
Lucas, can you send us the details that would be important in the consideration of a candidate for the commission, or?
Is that in the Century Code or where is that?
No, the Century Code just says that the mayor appoints somebody and then the city council confirms, it doesn't say anything about them being required to. To be a resident or outside or this or that.
All right. Case, Vance, on your experience in the past with these guys, I mean, what, what, how many hours are we looking like at roughly, like, say, take one project? What are we looking at? Ten hours, forty hours? I mean, if you were just gonna.
No, it's not that much. The fee is then set at three hundred dollars per project.
Yep, it is three hundred dollars per project. Yeah, okay.
By previous boards. So if it takes them two hours, they get three hundred, if it takes them forty hours, they get three hundred.
Right, and I was just trying to get a gauge on, because I wanna, look, if we talk to these people, they're gonna wanna know, how much time is it gonna take for me to do this? And I'm gonna go, no clue.
Right, how many times a week do we have to meet?
Yeah, that's what I mean, how often do they need to meet? I don't know, that's the stuff I don't know.
But that's because, that's all dependent on how many projects you put in front of them.
But like, right now, we have a backlog, we gotta knock these out. But right, initially upfront, they're gonna be busy and we may not need them for another six months. Right, you know, what I'm getting at.
So how many projects are we behind on?
Like, six or s-.
There's, I have four or five.
There's potential for up to, some of them haven't been constructed yet, so we won't have a cost for this period.
But I mean, it's, it's coming, I just know we've got, it's backlog and we've got stuff coming, so they're probably, I was thinking six.
It doesn't say anything about them having term on it, so you can just appoint.
Okay.
But you're saying normal is six years? Is that what states in there?
It says they shall serve a term of six years, but it doesn't say that they can only serve one, one term.
But they should be reappointed then, if that's.
Yeah, but I don't know when they were appointed, so we'd have to look at that to find out for sure.
I don't for sure they were placed at, uh, Prairie View.
And that was two thousand fifteen dash two or something.
Yeah.
It'd be kind of a bad deal to stick all three new ones on big projects right away too.
And do we have to, can we have more than three?
Correct, that's a good question, I was gonna ask that too.
Could we have potentially five?
I don't think you want more than three, it's just gonna complicate the.
But could you have more than three?
This says three.
Three is the number, not three minimums to shut down.
Okay.
Shall appoint three reputable residents.
Oh, residents, there you go.
Okay, along with that, for next meeting, could you give us maybe a comparison, city, on what they do and what they pay?
What do you mean by what they do?
No, it's the amount of people they have.
It's three.
Their size, everybody has three.
North Coast Century Code says three reputable residents.
Yep. But they'll be sitting down with you guys, I mean, they're not gonna be sitting in oblivion, they'll be sitting with you guys having this conversation.
And then that list will then go to you guys.
Yeah, exactly.
But before it even goes through, like, because I sent the process and it's like, the assessment list that they confirm has to get published for two weeks. And then all the residents are informed about that, and then they can protest, and then they confirm their list, send it to the city auditor. City auditor publishes it in the paper for two more weeks, and then, uh, the city council will hear it and then hear any objections, and then it's approved. So it go, it still has to go through quite the process, and that's why we need to get going on this now. Because that assessment commission might need to meet multiple times per improvement project to get these benefits assessed. Especially for the SSL, if that's gonna be done this year, that's a pretty big project and a lot of people are gonna be involved in that one.
Right there.
So we do need to get rolling on this. Three members, residents of the city, we need to find out when the other ones were, what their term is like. And go from there.
All right, so let's do this and you guys can just get back in two weeks. All right, the other thing, I was just gonna update, you guys probably all heard this, but West Fargo Schools, um, they got back the demographics from that show that came through here. Um, it looks like the enrollments may not be as high as what they were anticipating, so they might be able to push that school off another year, which is okay in my book. That gives us a little bit more time to get stuff employed. Of course, we won't know until August. Once the August, once the kids show up for school. That'll start predating whether they're below, on, or above enrollment numbers. That'll probably tell the tale of the tape right there.
They said it was one year.
Hmm?
Is it one year?
Might delay it one year. They're hoping.
Paper there stands, they might not need it.
Um, no, I don't think that's right.
So a person doesn't, might not need it, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah. So, no, it's, I don't think that's the question, the question is when are they going to build it? Initially, it was shells in the ground twenty nineteen. I talked, I talked to Mark, I've already talked to Mark.
They're already talking about the fourth.
Cool. Yeah.
They're saying the third second grade class could be the largest class and then there's more going to be a decline after the second.
Yeah, that's only tech, only temporary.
They say that this school could be considerably smaller to begin with, too.
Yes.
Where they upgrade, yeah, where they have the expansion on it.
And they're talking about the fourth one already, so, which would be after twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Open my computer.
So.
So, yeah. So like I said, it's just, it appears like it's just kind of a delay right now, but again, we won't know until August and first being a little bit more, but anyway. And I'll be talking to Mark a little bit more about that here next couple of weeks. So anyway, that's what I know at that, at this point. Uh, city planner update, um, hit some back and forth with Brent, um. I think what we should do, guys, is we should spend one evening talking about city planning and focus. What I'm suggesting we do is on Wednesday the twenty-sixth, we have a special meeting. Brent will be in town. And we just spend that evening, a couple hours, going nothing but city planning. Which will get, and go over his stuff. Because he's put together some items I've sent you guys, he's gonna be putting together some more items, um, I think we should do something like that. I don't know what you guys' thoughts are, but. I'm just looking at that Wednesday, he will be in town here Monday night, he's gonna meet with Park Board Monday night. Frank, talk to those guys at planning and zoning on Tuesday night. We'll snag him on Wednesday night and then Thursday, he's gonna hightail it back to Montana and cry for a while.
Okay, just a question for you. We were gonna have our city meeting on the twenty-fourth as well.
Yep. Yeah, so we'll have to push.
Is that still gonna happen, or are we gonna move our meeting to a different night? We're gonna move it to Wednesday and as our meeting. Have that on the agenda.
I don't want anything else on the agenda when we do this city planning, so if we wanna do that, I'm okay with that, but I don't want any others. Topics, subjects, agenda items, anything, the city planning.
We do have other agenda items, but do we move those to the thirty-first, week after the meeting? Just so we don't conflict a part, because trying to, I mean, I don't know, but. We're limited for space, so I'll just throw it out there.
What do you guys think? Well, I don't do it, I'm just, I don't know what date then, I know.
I'll just put it down for Wednesday.
Yeah.
Right?
I'm not gonna be here, so I can, we're mowing or something, but I'm traveling that day.
Yeah, because if I had said that, I wasn't sure if that's still going or not.
I, I've been down for the Tuesday, Wednesday here.
Okay, um, yeah, then we have a regular meeting, which is scheduled for the twenty-fourth, if we wanna push that off, we moved it once. We wanna move it again, so we're not conflicting with Park Board.
That leading two weeks in a row.
Yep, would be if we moved it.
Or we, yeah.
You're saying we don't, that's the same night as Park Board, right?
So that would be the only thing there, because it's just a space issue.
So you go over to the fire hall.
Yeah, we talked about that, didn't we, talk about going over to the fire hall?
We've had planning and zoning, Park Board can go over there.
You just better check that it's not, that it's available, because it's booking up really fast on nights. So talk to Ryan.
I'll make a note.
Let's, let's tend to leave it, leave it as is until we hear something else.
Right.
Well, for me, it's an issue because I can't be at this meeting and that meeting at the same time.
I like that, Russ.
So, while I think it's fine to have both at the same time, I can't be at both. So, that's the only.
Mm-hmm.
What time is theirs at?
So far, it's ours.
Why don't we move ours up to like five?
Uh.
We all agree.
Yeah.
That works for me. They even cook dinner and eat dinner during meetings.
Um, okay.
Can we jump to me and Adam quick? Our wellhouse has been running for like five hours straight, so we wanna make sure that there's not a leak somewhere since we were working on it today.
We just checked it on inside. I don't know if you guys had anything for us. I got your email, we're working on budget stuff, I got.
I've contacted a couple people for plows, I've talked about leasing on a sweeper, got that going, so we'll get more of those done. I mean, we had that water leak on the one well going over to the wellhouse today, got it fixed, but it's just been running a lot today, so we wanna just double check that. Something's not leaking over there, something, Adam checked it on inside, it was.
It is back online, the, the water main wasn't fixed.
Yeah, it was just, it come off the well, there was a fern co there that started leaking at one of the fittings, dug it up, put a new fern co on it, put it, but just. He checked it like twenty minutes ago and the wells been running for the last five hours straight. Yeah, it was just, it come off the well, there was a fern co there that started leaking at one of the fittings, dug it up, put a new fern co on it, put it, but just, he checked it like twenty minutes ago, and the well's been running for the last five hours straight, so we just wanna make sure that.
Try to get caught up.
It, well, it got.
No, it's been caught up.
It's been caught up, and then it just stayed at one seventeen and been running. We just wanna make sure that it's not leaking over there, or something's not going on, because usually don't run for that. I mean, it's dry, but you usually don't run for that many hours at a time.
Exactly.
But we'll get, I'll get more numbers on the budget stuff, we've been working on this for that, but, other than that, if you guys have any other questions for us?
Any more, uh, okay, I'll bring it up, the, the, the garbage.
Oh, I was gonna say, you and I and these guys should meet this week and talk about composting and all that.
Any additional issues, more issues?
You can have two empty containers like we did going into last week, and you can see what's out there today, and they couldn't get to them to dump today.
Cause they were staffed again?
Oh, yeah, they were both empty come Friday, completely empty. Now they're both over full, and there's probably enough for two more just through the weekend. So I mean, I know you brought up maybe calling two days in advance, but I can't call two days advance, because I don't know when they're gonna be full. I mean, I can literally, they're both empty, and they can fill up in one night, they can fill up in three days, sometimes they can go half a week, but.
That's the best we can do, right?
The other issue is, we're gonna have to go out there and brush them down every time to pick them up anyway, because if any of the branches stick outside, we can't get that hurt.
Because there's been problems, they'll show up at seven thirty, when no one's here yet, and we always say, have a call in, we're not here till eight.
Okay, so the only other option, the only other option is to put these things behind the gates and tell residents that they're open at certain hours, and that's it.
And I can tell you exactly what's gonna happen, they'll dump it right in front of that gate where they're dumping right now.
That's why the piles are there.
Where the, I guarantee you they will.
Well, then we're gonna put a camera and it's no dumping, or, you know, and.
No, I know, but I'm just.
Then, then it has to go off.
But you know what, in other cities, that's exactly how it works. There's a gate, and there's hours, and people can't dump stuff.
Fargo's wide open, people can dump anything twenty-four seven.
Yeah, but why is Fargo people don't pile it up all over, you know?
But I know, I'm, but.
Been beating into them for so long, we just need to start beating.
Exactly, you gotta get a find, you gotta get a camera, and you gotta stick to it.
Just get rid of them.
Then they're just gonna find somewhere else to dump it. Someone just dumped mattresses out on Fifth and Sixth Street. Last week.
I know, I saw a mattress.
We had to go pick them up. So I mean, if you get rid of them, they're just gonna find somewhere else to dump them.
And generally, they're gonna go a half mile outside of town in each direction and dump them. Even, even real early this spring, when it was.
Right, well, can we, can we discuss, we'll talk to these guys.
Yep, I'll talk about that. Anything else, guys?
It's almost to the point where we almost need four containers just to even try to keep up, but we don't really got room to put four containers anywhere.
Right, yeah, okay.
So, alright, thank you.
Good.
Alright.
No, my application for the state should be in, hopefully tomorrow.
Okay, good.
We should be able to maybe start getting stuff off the burner off.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, here you go.
Okay, mine's kinda short and sweet, I think. Uh, permits to date is fifty-six, that's the total I've issued this year. Last year, just to give you a little idea, I had fifty-one at this time. So we're following pretty close in line.
How many homes, Perry?
We did eighteen homes so far.
This year?
This year, yeah.
Compared to last year?
Compared, I didn't compare it to last year, but remember last year, we had twenty-nine total, to give you an idea at the end of the year. It was twenty-nine total. So, we got eighteen so far. Commercial to date, that's a brand new building, not a remodel and nothing else like that, we only have one. Home remodels, I have fifteen. Um, that's probably more than I had last year. I, I didn't compare that. Uh, the one issue, uh, me and Cory and, um, Jimmy was involved in this too. We need to make sure that, uh, we write a letter to them people that live in Adeline subdivision, and telling them who's responsible taking care of the weeds and the water, and where it can go and where it can't go. You've got neighbors that are fighting amongst themselves and everything else. So I think we agreed, Cory, that, um, if everybody else is in agreement, they'll put that board, that we could send a letter with the details in it to every resident. And then there's no more questions. You okay with that?
That was that whole thing where they're keeping on about the drainage issue up.
Yeah, that just goes on and on and on and on, never stops.
They all think that the city's responsible for that.
I get the phone calls.
Yeah, and they don't want the street wet. Well, I'm sorry, there's drains there, they could see the drains where they bought their lots. It's gonna be wet. But, uh, Lucas, uh, sent me an email, or he sent it to Jimmy, Jimmy forwarded it to me, and he's got some nice questions and answers in there, where it's pretty well detailed for the home, for the homeowner, in regards to, um, who's responsible for everything.
So let's, I mean, like I said, let's get that letter out, send it to them, and, I mean, we shouldn't feel any more phone calls. If you get a phone call, I just say, read the letter we sent you, that's all the information.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Boom, thank you.
Can I get a copy of that, and we'll just put it in horse happenings, and this way we'll, they'll get a letter, and then they'll see it in there as well, so.
I could post it on the website, too.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to.
We'll get a copy.
Keep the message out there, so that.
Yeah.
You can do a Q and A, like, just pull the question and answers out of it, because there might be some more stuff in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Pluck out the.
We can just get that out there, so there, you know, the, the questions are answered that way. You don't have to take any more phone calls on that, because that's just, that gets silly after a while.
And, and for me, a Word version would work easier to pull the stuff out, but PDF's okay, too.
I guess it's just an email right now.
It's just an email form right now. It's just an email, and just type the response.
Yeah, they're just.
Perfect, perfect.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know why, but, uh, waste management had some real problems trying to pick, pick up one homeowner's garbage, and it got nasty between the homeowner and coming to the city, because they figured we weren't doing nothing. And I finally sent a nasty email to Paul, and he here you up and called, uh, Brian, and, oh yeah, we don't know what was going on. He had the address from day one, I gave it to him. And he has no excuse for any of it. And he just blew me off. And, uh, I was very impressed.
Blew you off?
Yeah. Just forgot about it and left it.
Wow.
If you wanna put it in there most, whatever, but.
Yeah, he and I had an conversation about it, so.
Next time, I'm just gonna call you. Uh, I just want you to know, FYI, uh, there's some, there's some homes out here that apparently having some banking issues right at this time, because one of them's all boarded up already, and one on a new one.
Has some what issues?
Well, must be pilot and bankruptcy or something, because they quit working on it and they boarded it up, Sultan Prairie.
That's the one over at Bellevue?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, that house was built, uh, started construction, had a, uh, built for a homeowner, and they did not put in nine foot walls on the main floor, they put eighty foot walls on the main floor. The homeowner walked, and it's between the contractor and the frame. We had lawsuits going on. Good point you bring up on that.
So, and the other one was, every home that.
How long should we let something like that sit?
Yeah, how long?
Well.
And again, it's a, just an eyesore out there.
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of information, is I did have a builder slash contractor call me, and wanted to know the permit number and a couple things out of there, and he was gonna try to buy it so we could get that house going. So I don't know if the banking was helping him or what, but there is somebody looking at it. So hopefully, we can get it in the right direction. The other home, that one that was a modular home, uh, that guy just, every time you tell him he's gotta do something, he hasn't did it, he doesn't have a CO yet, but he finally called me, and, uh, we got an agreement, he says he's gonna get it taken care of so he can get it back on the market, because that house, that modular home in the corner up there, in Park Corner.
It has been on the market.
Yeah, I know, but he can't, he doesn't have a CO, so the bank ain't gonna give him no loan without a CO. So, it's not that big a deal. He's just gotta do some small things, and he just, I can't imagine them letting it go this long, but it has, he said he's gonna get right at it, and hopefully he'll finish it up this week.
Well, there's also that commercial building that still isn't completed.
Yeah, I know, and I talked to him, too. I talked to him, uh, oh, probably a week ago.
That's been going on two years with that project.
Yeah, he got a second permit, and that permit's gonna run out here in Oc- October, and I said, I don't think they'll be willing to give you a third permit, because you haven't did anything on the outside. I told him, get the outside done. If you don't finish the inside right away, that's one thing, but finish the outside for the neighbors around you, you know, and for the city.
What was his answer to that?
I did not really get an answer. I'll be very honest about that. But that's another eyesore. I'm gonna have to bug him again, but I just talked to him a week ago, just so you know, I didn't forget about him. So, that's it, I'm done.
Okay, sounds good. Alright.
I will have the, uh, preliminary, preliminary budget numbers out to you guys for the end of the week. I'll throw my agenda for the next meeting, when I have that maybe. So we'll hold a special meeting for that, doesn't have to be.
We might have to do something with that with the budget.
Can we do a special meeting, because I guess you say you have a preliminary budget, right? Is what you're saying? Right, is that what you said?
Yes, I, I will have, yeah.
A preliminary budget, I guess I'm not sure what's that made up of, then. Isn't each department kind of looking for, you know, in terms of working with those guys on requirements for equipment, or labor, or any of those sorts of things?
That's fine.
Okay.
Bring it to the, bring it up.
Okay.
I have, there's, expense categories like utilities, telephone, I know about what they're going to be, so I estimate, I estimate that. So, yeah, bring forward whatever you want.
Okay.
So Vance, when is the budget due to the state?
What is it due to the state?
Well, August is when we have to have our.
When is it due?
Oh, it's, um, the middle of August, it has to be. So we've got probably the first meeting in August, we'll need to finalize it.
Wow. We don't have any time.
Because they moved it up this year, didn't they?
Mm-hmm, they moved that by a month, so.
It's out of our control, Sharon.
Wow.
Vance, have they come back to you from the state yet, and given you an idea how much they're gonna decrease our city funding? Okay, I haven't either, I thought I was curious if they.
I thought there was, I thought there was a listserv that there were some finance department numbers that were published.
I don't know if these were city.
I thought they were preliminary, but I thought there was something that was published. Thought I saw something, I didn't see it.
I don't know, I heard forty percent, twenty percent, eighteen percent, I heard so many numbers.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Well, if you go by what Lieutenant Governor says, he says it's not gonna be any.
No, we'll see.
No.
Not gonna be any cut?
No, it's gonna be like this year. It's not gonna be any worse.
I wouldn't buy that.
I just didn't know if you'd heard anything.
Okay.
Okay, so when are we gonna have a budget meeting then? Because it's the tenth?
What I'm trying to figure out here, too, is if we do this, if we have this city planning meeting on the twenty-sixth, um.
No, do not add this to the.
Nope, no, I'll go on to it, but as I was saying, that was a lot, that week is probably shot.
The week before or the week after?
The week after, it's gotta be the week after, it's gotta be the first week of August.
Or, or sooner.
I think we do it sooner, I think we do it next week as a starting point to try and at least review some numbers and try and see where we're, we got holes that we gotta try and fill.
Too many, unfortunately. Okay.
Case, next week, I'm going to go on Thursday and Friday.
I'm on Monday and Tuesday. I'd be here Tuesday night.
I don't, Wednesday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Next week?
Traveling the next three weeks.
Well, is it something that can be given to us to preview?
Well, yeah, if we get it now, I mean.
Yeah, but I think we have a lot of input to it, I think we have a truckload of input to it.
But yet, if we see it ahead of time, how much of that are we digesting?
Well.
So we're now coming into a cold.
I will send you the numbers this week, when I have.
Okay.
Well, it, it could very possibly be that we need a couple meetings.
It probably will be.
So, Jen, for the twenty-fourth.
Schedule something next week, schedule something next week, and then maybe the first week of August.
Or like that July thirty-first?
What if we meet early? On the twenty-fourth at six, or something on the twenty-fourth.
Or five, you suggested.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I wanna do regular five, we could do a three then.
This just gets better.
Some of us have to work.
Let's start at eight.
Work for a living, Karen.
If we start at eight, we'll have breakfast.
No, but if we wanted to meet at six and just go over, you know, we could just spend.
Right.
An hour going over the number, that gives us a chance to ingest what you've got.
Okay.
What we can maybe add later, but we can ingest it that night and have a conversation at least about the numbers.
That would be fine.
You know, just, yeah.
But to start the conversation. You're saying by the seventh.
Yep.
We need to be locked and loaded on this.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, we kinda take it to twenty-fourth, and if we needed to do something at first, on the seventh, fourth, August.
I'd say we start on the twenty-fourth, and if we need to meet the thirty-first, the following Monday.
Yeah, good idea.
Then.
Yep.
Which we probably will, that's what I'm saying, but let's have that initial conversation, and we can at least get that part knocked out.
Agreed.
That way you'll give us, I mean, Vance would have a pretty good idea.
Yep.
That's only two weeks, though, do we really need a meeting next week, too?
No, that's fine, if you wanna do it early on the twenty-fourth.
What time do we do our Wednesday one?
I just, we start at seven.
You wanna do it Wednesday at five, or six?
Yeah.
I can't, I just gotta let Brent know, it's basically around his, make sure, I think he'll be here, he'll be okay with that, right?
Does anybody have any conflict going earlier?
I'm okay.
At six.
I can't be there, period.
Wednesday, right now, the twenty-sixth, we said.
You could Monday?
I'm doing work.
Okay.
We're meeting on the twenty-sixth, okay.
Let's, let's move on.
Twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So I can do it.
Can we move on to twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth at five. Anytime.
Well, okay, hang on, no.
What time is the twenty-sixth?
The twenty-sixth will be for the city plan.
What time?
But you wanna, guys, wanna to meet at five o'clock, and we talk about the budget.
Let's do that.
Okay, that's what we'll do, then. Five o'clock, twenty-sixth, we'll talk, talk the budget.
Oh, I thought we were doing. Five o'clock, ahead of our, our normal on the twenty-fourth, that's what I was.
That's what I was thinking we were doing.
Oh.
John, is that what you're, when you can meet here?
I can't, that Monday.
Can you meet at six on Monday?
Are you up?
Possibly.
Six on Monday?
Twenty-fourth.
Because then you don't lose Brian, if John can meet at six.
Okay.
Oh, shoot, fucking lineup.
You gone?
On the twenty-fourth, I'll be coming back from lineup, I don't know what time we'll get back.
We need to watch.
Yeah, you, you're popular.
It's like a full-time gig.
It is.
I got lucky, I'm not going anywhere, not gonna, otherwise, I was gone every week.
Well, I say, if we're doing it the twenty-fourth at six, just leave it at that, and we'll see how fast I go back from lineup, that's all.
Try and get, try and get some, uh, maybe escort or something.
Yeah, I'm not trying to kick Brian out, but yet, if you're.
If I, if I get you, that's fine.
But you have more, your infrastructure projects have a much bigger hit to the budget, so they're kind of important to be part of that.
Alright.
So I say go with the original plan.